Ladies and gentlemen, I have 5:30 and we'll call the special meeting to order. This is a special meeting, so some of the things that we usually go through will not be doing tonight because it is a special meeting. The first item of business is old business, and the first on the agenda is a street closing request for Japaka, Mr. Jimbo Ledford. Yes, sir, you're up, sir.
I'm first.
Just as a matter of fact, just because we are, we have a slightly different agenda, which is a continuation meeting, so you could add to it. So it's just, I think a motion and vote to approve the agenda would be appropriate.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if there's any more additions to the...
I'd be happy to do that, certainly would. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
If there are any things to add.
We're going to need to add a closed session.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, there's a need for a closed session for economic development incentives, and again, that's ACGS 143-3, 10.1184.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we add that to the agenda.
Okay, second?
I'll make the motion, second, that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, all in favor?
Can we have a discussion real fast? I just wanted to say, is this something we can discuss in open session, or do we have to do it in closed session?
What's that?
Whatever the motion's being made.
This topic is required, economic development grants in general. The state added a statutory statement a few years ago that said, anything announced, they have to announce it first, and if not, then they kind of just disappear. So it does have to stay in the closed session for now.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor. Okay, we're adding a closed session to the end of the agenda. The next item, Mr. Ledford, did you have anything, sir, you wanted to request?
Yeah. I have a little something here, so you bear with me. Good afternoon, my name is Jimbo Ledford, and although I've been operating a reputable plumbing business here in the town of Franklin in Macon County for the past 14 years, I am coming before you tonight for Japaka. I've got your sound system here. For those of you that don't know, Japaka is an acronym for Jimbo's Event Planning Corporation Association. I'm here tonight to speak to you about a couple of possible road closures for the later day weekend. First, I'd like to take the time to thank the town board for allowing you the opportunity to be heard on this matter, and I would like to respectfully retract their requests. This event has been postponing definitely, is a large part of our inability to satisfy one local government agency or another in the town of Franklin. Most recently being the town board's request for us to gain permission from our surrounding businesses for the closures. I would like to start by saying, I believe this is a fool's errand, as we are all well aware of the fact that Phil and Donnie both put up signs stating no parking at their establishments, and even the nearby baby grass lot is serving no purpose. I seriously have my doubts to you, the company's owners have changed their stance, or would care to cooperate at this time, even though we've designed the road closures to cause them minimal to no impact. I was also unable to meet with the chief of police as to how we can make such complex road closures work on these rural back roads, as also instructed by the council. Although it seems to me personally, I have yet most faith in our current police department, and I know in my heart that they are well-equipped for such a daunting task. I was however able to meet with one of the local officers on both Friday and Saturday night, when he arrived at altered frequencies to do the job that the town has given him of upholding its noise ordinance, and proceeded to shut us down twice before we had even officially opened the doors. I do want to note that my exchange with the officer was mutually respectful, and he took the time to speak with me about the ordinance, and explained it to me to the best of his understanding. Nonetheless, we still had to close. The noise ordinance goes against the very nature of our after-hours establishment, with no exemption other than a special use permit that can be given or denied by one person, the chief of police, and with no real way to gauge the noise as a nuisance. It really puts the police in the middle of the business owner and the private citizen, with nothing to base their decision on other than their opinion, or whoever is directing at the time. Surely you remember me pleading with the town board not to pass this ordinance as it was, because of what it would do to my business, and here it is. I would like to conclude by saying you are right, Mr. Collins, the days usually win. Congratulations. And, Mr. Mayor, I think you'll take great pride in the fact that you can add altered frequencies and Japaka to your growing list of unsavory groups that you run out of town. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else want to speak on that? Okay, thank you. There was no...
Yeah.
Come ahead, John. Welcome, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I am Bishop, I own for all town markets, plus if y'all know that. And I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the problems it causes to close streets and limit access to businesses that are trying to operate within the town. And maybe this is the end of that, I don't know, but it's... We've worked hard to establish a business, a restaurant business, that is not on a high traffic street, and it's hard to do that if folks are closing streets or limiting access to that business. And... So this, you know, maybe that's taken care of, but I have great problems with people closing access to my business, and I just, I wish the town council to know that. I wish Jimbo all the luck in the world, he's a, you know, I want to be a good neighbor, and I hope to be a good neighbor, but parking is an issue, and a street closure is certainly an issue with my business, and I wanted to understand that, my feelings on that. You know, the only way that I've been notified of all this is through Bobby and Macon media, and so, you know, I hope action, you know, looks like action may have been taken without me knowing anything about it. You can't expect the person that's making a request to close streets to go to neighbors and talk to them about what's going on, so anyway, does everybody have my full understanding of what this is? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Counselor, I don't know that we need to take any action, because there was no specific where, when, or why.
No, I mean, the item was essentially withdrawn.
Unless somebody else has anything.
There we go.
When there's a problem, let a woman fix it. Thank you. I appreciate all the engineering, police, fire for not being able to handle it. Okay, the next item is a discussion on the barking dog ordinance. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, your regular meeting began with the wrong version of this ordinance. It's been corrected and is in front of you. The purpose of this is to correct, or we add two different methods essentially of getting into regulation of barking, eventual barking dogs. There is, and would still be, a section in your chapter 91 that deals with animals, saying that it's prohibited to keep dogs that by prolonged habitual barking cause serious annoyance interfering with the reasonable use and enjoyment of the property. But that interfering with reasonable use of a person's property is what the noise ordinance that you have addresses, and it sets the method for which all other sorts of noise are addressed by the police. So my recommendation, and all this would do if you adopt it, is leave the habitual barking provision in place, move your dealing with it to the noise ordinance where all other, you know, things of that nature are now dealt with. I'm happy to answer any questions you had about it, but a proper motion would just be to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Do you mind if I come up?
Come, go ahead, thank you.
My name is Mike Waters, I live on Pauline Avenue, and I've had a reoccurring terrible issue with barking dogs next door to me that bark all day long for over 30 minutes at a time. I'm, I work about 60 hours a week at the middle school, and I take care of my mother in the evening with Alzheimer's, so my, I want to rest, you know, and I, we've lived there since '82, my mom's lived in the area since the '40s. And, you know, when we first moved there, it was a nice peaceful neighborhood, and I know that can't be helped, but these dogs, it's two dogs, and all day long they bark. And I have my air conditioning going on right now, which blocks some of it, but once the weather cools down and I turn my AC off, it's going to be the same. I'm not the only neighbor that's had problems with this. Hunter Strickland has had issues with it, as well as two other of my neighbors. We tried to follow the ordinance, where we got, we typed it out, got signatures of neighbors, and then they ticketed the offender, but the very next day she was able to get the ticket dropped, and we weren't notified of this, so we went to court about a month and a week afterwards, when we found out it had been dropped the very next day. So we just sort of feel like there's no meat in the ordinance at all. Hunter Strickland has a dog, had nothing against animals, but Hunter's dog barks within reason, not non-stop, or, you know, for one hour at a time, and screeching, and it's like Chinese water torture. And it's, you know, to the point like, wow, am I going to have to sell my home just to get out of here?
We're going to try to address this issue.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Well, we appreciate you coming.
Well, this is the first time I've ever actually come to a town meeting so that I can tell you a little bit how perturbed I am about the situation, but thank you, guys.
Well, we're here for our people to come and express their opinions and...
I appreciate it. Pardon my nervousness a little bit.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am, I am going to have to limit everybody to about five, no more than five minutes, though, because we've got to move on. And really, we did not have a public comment session scheduled, but out of courtesy, we will allow it.
While we're working on tech inclusion, Mr. Mayor, I'll just also say that the part of this struck out of, this strikes out of chapter 94, 91, had a higher standard for barking dogs than anything else in the noise ordinance. So this should make it easier to enforce than, I don't know why, but at the time, the thought was you had to have two complainants, and both of them saying willing to go to court, be prosecuting witnesses, and so forth, so that'd be...
Yes, ma'am, would you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Virgita Kanto, V-I-R-G-I-T-T-A, last name is K-A-N-T-O, and it's my parents, and I'm Tiesto Kanto. And I ditto everything that he says. We reside at 265 Silver Spruce Lane, and we've been there for, I don't know, ten, five years, and for the past two years, we've hardly slept at all. There's two dogs, they're chained, they have like a doghouse, but it is a doghouse, because they're there 24/7. They start barking non-stop from 11:00 PM, on and off, until 6:00, 7:00, on and off, all, you know, and all day long. And sometimes one starts howling, the other starts barking, and then they're next door, they have three dogs, and they're loose, so they chime in, so we have five barking dogs. And when we go up to our road, of course, we have to pass them, the three dogs are loose, and they chase our car, and I'm afraid we're going to hit them, because they come in, you know. So I'm really, we're coming here for help, because I'm very shy, and it takes a lot for me to come up here.
Go ahead, say it.
Us two, we're first timers here.
I understand.
So we need to ask for guidance, like what we can do to remedy this situation, because we don't want to leave this for...
Right. Well, after we adopt this, we'll have something we can move on from, you know. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, counselor, where do we stand now?
Motion to adopt the ordinance as presented would be appropriate.
All right, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented if there's no further discussion. I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we've got a new way of looking at this now, so hopefully it'll take care of the problem.
And I have a dog.
Pardon?
And I'm an animal lover. For me to come in, and I feel sad for these dogs, because they're literally, they're like, their life is just that little doghouse. I don't even know if they feed them, you know, it's...
Well, that's something that can be looked at, it will be. Thank you so much. All right, we have some new business, a discussion on uniform guide policies. Counselor, you're up again, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it's entirely up to you and the council whether you want to inform everybody that there's a danger of slipping into a coma when you hear too much about the uniform guidance and policies that are followed. If anybody wanted to leave, I think, you know, it would be something the council would really hold against.
No, just get out of here.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, actually back in the July meeting, I think we first talked about this, the uniform guidance, just to try to make it as short as possible, is a set of IRS regulations that, again, in place for quite some time, that require certain handling in terms of federal dollars, how you, how the government receives them, accounts for them, and gets them out and expends them. And the bottom line is, if you get any federal dollars for anything, and you don't follow these very closely, you could get in all sorts of trouble with them. They also have now added this finally to, it's been around for years, but now they're starting to actually enforce this, and expect you to have local policies, and your auditors are now beginning to make sure you've got these in place. So I don't need you to, need to go into detail with this, of course, I'm happy to answer any question you've got about it, and I think in July we've got approval from the law on these policies. What this engenders, though, is a discussion about whether or not, to what extent does the council want to be involved in policy formation? So to take a step back, what I'm talking about is, at the very top level of the authority that the council has is the formation of ordinances, and we just passed one. You are the only authority for the town of Franklin, the town council is the only authority for the town of Franklin that can make a law, and that's what an ordinance has force of law. Below that, there is town policy, and that's more how do we want to do things on a day-by-day sort of basis. When, before you adopted the council manager form of government, you didn't, the county, the board of Alderman was both the legislative and the executive, you did both sides of things. And so there wasn't any need to figure out where those different, there wasn't any other place for authority to go. You have that now, and this is a place where I think if you delegated to your manager the authority to adopt policies where, for instance, they are required by law, they don't require any different expenditure of funds outside of what's already been budgeted for the year, something along those lines, that she's got authority to go ahead and implement those practices, and just tell you about them later, it could be just a written report, it could be a monthly report at the meeting if you wanted it that way. And it's not to say that it would reduce your authority over the overall governance of the town, the council would have the authority to step in and say, we don't think this policy works right on a day-by-day basis, matter of manager, here's what we think you ought to do with it. So I guess what we needed was some more discussion about where you all see this going, and what authority would you, where can we draw that divide so we're clear on the future?
Let me ask you this, is there any need for any of the council to have any kind of day-by-day oversight or interest in looking into this?
Well, where it deals with personnel, there's none to have be had anyway, because the only person who does hire and fire for this body is your town manager. So you really, that's not to say you can't be involved with knowing what the town's business is like, and visiting, and so forth. You really do have to draw the line at making personal, you know, directives or anything, although I don't feel like that's been a problem for a real long time. I can, you know, I think you all are very good about that division. But it's this more formal sort of policy thing, I guess is what I'm asking about.
Yes, Mr. Counselor?
You mentioned personnel, what other realms are you talking about?
Well, so there's a set of things that are, again, you know, as I say, you're the only body who can create a law for the town of Franklin to pass an ordinance. There are a set of responsibilities that the manager has that are explicit in statute, and it's things like, attend to your meetings, suggest, you know, what she would say are wise decisions for the council to follow, formulate a budget, you know, enact that ordinance when it's been passed, make sure your other ordinances are enforced. And then any other tasks that the council sets for her to do. It's just we've never really gone into what, you know, where to go with that part of the statute. What do you want, and this is the place where I think is a reasonable thing for you to do, to delegate the policy, day-to-day policy decisions or policy, written policy changes that are needed in her judgment, when, again, my suggestion is to start off with where they're required, they're flat-out required by law, and don't require you to make an appropriation of funds.
What was it, Tom, Joe?
You know, obviously, whether required by law or not, if in fact, the council members had an idea different than what the manager was doing, the council members could certainly make that known. You asked some questions about other examples or something, parking or something like that, which is kind of a discretionary item, that would be probably up to the council members to tackle something like that. But we just need to know that our manager is going to take care of the day-to-day things, and those things which require decisions less than the ordinances that we obviously have to go through the hoops would be, would be for the council members to, among ourselves, to get consensus on, and then, and then inform the manager, I believe that's what we're talking about.
And day-to-day property management is a good example of that, too. You know, the long-term ownership of it is obviously, that's a council decision, and so that's, I think that's a good illustration of where, I think day-to-day decisions about property management are generally supposed to be the managers to have, they don't affect the overall, you know, your ownership of it. And, like you said, Joe, they don't, they're not meant to say you can't have any part in it, you don't have your opinions about it, and if the whole council feels some way, that's a directive, and that's, you know, you can still give those. So that may be another, to specify day-to-day management decisions that don't, you know, day-to-day management decisions about property management, to have that spelled out would be a good thing.
Joe, I think we're already practicing this, pretty much now.
Just needs to be official.
It seems to be like we're, there's no issue here, so I don't know that there's an issue to adopting it, whatever we need to do tonight, because I think day-to-day everything runs very smoothly.
Well, so to circle back on the Grinfly Dog Uniform Guidance for a second, the reason that that comes up and inspires this whole thing is that we got put in a kind of a pinch for time, because this, it's a long story, but it got, we got sort of sprung on local governments, you have to have all this in place right now. And it was before, really, you were going to have your next meeting. I forget, how was the exact date it went live, was it July?
It was June 30th.
June 30th.
And you had that very...
So it was before your July meeting, and we had to consider it in place, and there's no, there's nothing explicit anywhere for me to look at and say, yes, Senator, you definitely have the authority to say, this is the town's policy, and I have authority to do that, because we haven't spelled out any of that anywhere. So what I would suggest is at least let me bring back to you a policy, that you can, I mean, again, you have the force of law, you don't have to, you can change it if you want to, without having to jump through the ordinance-type hoops, that spells out those few things, so we'll have that for guidance in the future. Does that sound good?
It does. Qua work on it. Explain to me, with only 18 years on the job, because I guess I missed it somewhere, exactly, we used to kind of have what I thought were committees on these different, especially water and sewer leases, we always had two bodies going around, you know, and reporting back to the board, but, John, you say that really there's a reason why that we can't have, and I missed it, just if you briefly cut back over that.
And you can have, and I'm, again, I never said don't have committees, and frankly, before I knew anything about the open meetings law, and started working with the town, it had been a forever practice to have these committees.
The quorum, you could go forward.
Who knows, I don't know when, yeah, they came into being or what, but the open meetings law is explicit that it applies to public bodies or committees thereof. And so if you have a designated committee that that public body designates, and it's, it does not have to be a quorum, I get it, I would have said the same thing back then, that, you know, if it doesn't have the authority to act, then what difference does it make? Because it all has to come back here for any final action anyway, so it's not like it's truly hidden from view. But the statute does say committees thereof, and I take it from that, if you have designated a committee, even if it's just two people, then it is a public body unto itself, and has to announce its meetings, keep, you know, keep minutes, go into closed session when it's appropriate, and so forth. And so that's, that was part of the reason to, not that you want to hide anything, there's just some practicalities to that. And so the idea of naming a liaison to a given, you know, group or function of the town also doesn't prevent somebody else who has adept knowledge or wants one that sits on the council from participating in that and learning about it, and if you haven't designated a committee, you don't have a public body.
Oh, it's pretty specific, it says two or more.
Yep. So we can only have one appointed representative to a committee, but if I want to invite Joe to go with me, or if he wants to invite, we can invite up to...
Well, you can have a quorum.
You can have two people.
This is one of those, I just do not agree with the open meetings law, but we have to live by it, so, but, yeah, I always thought that you couldn't have like a majority of the board, and, but no, yeah, they'll all take you, school of government and everybody.
Is it again, three or four? What is a quorum of six people?
There's a formula.
Or there's four, a lot of four.
It's four, so we could have three of us roaming around.
Unless you were, unless you were named on the same committee.
Yeah, well...
Right.
Well, I think if it's social, you can get away with it.
Hey, I'm on social.
Okay, any other questions?
For example, I'm on the EDC, but if somebody else were to be on the EDC, that's, would that be a committee? Because that's already a committee.
That is easier, because it itself is a public body and already managing itself that way, so I'm not as worried about those.
Okay, so this still says committee assigns, but we didn't agree that we would call ourselves liaisons.
Well, I don't remember when we said we'd be liaisons or not, did we?
I think that's the last meeting.
I guess we did, yeah. All right, does anybody dislike where you are?
It's a one-person committee, it makes sense.
I mean, I like semantics much as anybody, but a one-person committee, no.
I guess it depends. All right, so do we need to take any action on this, or we're just going to wait till you come back with a policy?
I will bring you back, I suggested policy for delegation to the manager. Other than that, I don't believe taking any other action.
Okay, all right, the next item is, I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed session.
Yes, sir.
Second, all in favor. All right, matter of manager, can we go back to the kitchen, it looks like there'll be quite a few others.
We got time to use the restroom before we do...
Yeah, go ahead. Take a few minutes, yeah.
For folks in the audience, and I'm sorry, we don't have a soundproof booth back there, but we do have to keep this in closed session, so I think we're going to have to ask, you know, if it's not raining at the moment, I'm sure it's lovely outside, so apologies.
And then as soon as there's, if there's any decision by the board, myself, hopefully she will be glad to come out and welcome you. chief will be glad to come out and welcome you guys back.
Good times. We're here to the branch office. Counselor, do you have a resolution to present to the Board at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I believe we've all...
I think everybody has their comments.
...with resolution, the Town Council having intent to make certain economic development grants, which again makes your intent known to pursue the project economic development grants for Project Y, which remains coven for now, and authorizes the Town Manager to send a letter to that effect. If a proper motion would just be to adopt the resolution as presented, although I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer in the session.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Bishop.
I'm moving that we adopt.
I tell you, so are there any questions? I'm sorry. I don't see any, so would you like to make them up?
Well, I do have a question. It can be in discussion. It's seconded already, that's fine. One, two, three, four. The fourth, whereas the Town Council is informed of the economic development grant is necessary to permit Project Y to locate within the Town of Franklin, the next sentence or the latter half of that second sentence, and without the same, Project Y will choose to locate in another city and state. I don't think we know that.
Well, we'll just have to, we'll just have to, I think, take that right now with where we are.
As I told you, one of the requirements, and this is in state law and case law, that says you, in order to make an economic development grant to a business, it can't be just for their convenience.
I understand there's competition, but we don't know it's a...
It's being represented to you, the town, that this, it will require this grant to let them locate the business as planned here, or that another location will be chosen. And I'm happy to drill down on more exactly about what that is between, you know, now and the next steps in the process. Again, we, both us and our partner in this, have to be able to demonstrate to the satisfaction of a court that that's the case. There's got to be good evidence.
It very well could be a second plan. We don't know that if, as worded, we don't know that it will choose to locate in other city and state, as it's planned.
That's why it says the Town Council's informed.
Just wanted to point that out.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed. In one opposition. All right. There being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, we stand adjourned.
Well, I called this damn special meeting.
Did you call this?
Well, I was the one that suggested change.
Please, Joe.
That's what I'm going to have to do.
I'm going to go back to work.
That's what I'm going to do.
Yeah, no, but I got my whiskey.